Let's go ahead and start.
Recording in progress.
We'll finally call to order this the Monday, April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, meeting of the Eldsville Town Council. Marshall, I believe you're doing both the pledge and the prayer tonight.
That's correct, yeah.
If you would please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our heavenly Father, we apologize just one more time to thank you so much for many blessings you have bestowed on this little town and many blessings you have bestowed on our employees and the citizens here. We sincerely continue to bless us in a way that would please be leading us to our thoughts and conversations, be with the council members tonight as they enter into this meeting and help them make the right decisions at the right time, the right way, and for the right reason. Again, we ask these things and do the same. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, Amber or Sandy, if you're finally here, got on, call please.
Scott Oldham.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, April twelfth, twenty-one-one, and the work session, April nineteenth, twenty-twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Amber, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
I passed, wasn't here.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
I abstained too, I wasn't present.
Action pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion several seconds when you're ready, Amber.
Scott Oldham.
Yeah.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Next under resolutions is resolution twelve dash twenty-twenty-one, transfer of funds cumulative capital development fund from the police department. Not sure who this is speaking to this.
Um, this is for the police department. There was one line that they needed a little bit more money in, and so this is just a transfer from one line up into the, or to the other line. Jimmy, I don't know if you want to do any more specific explaining. You're on mute.
Yes, this was a miscalculation, Amber, is that correct?
Um, I think you just needed a little bit more additional money to pay for some, maybe the cameras.
It looks like it's, it looks like it's going from building maintenance to radio slash equipment upgrades.
Exactly, yeah. It was, it was for the cameras we had to pay for, yeah.
Other questions about this resolution? Is there movement on this resolution?
I'll move to approve resolution twelve dash twenty-twenty-one, transfer of funds cumulative capital development fund for the police department.
Whenever you're ready, Amber.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Motion carry.
That concludes our resolutions receiving. There are two ordinances on first reading versus ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash ten to create fund one, is it one-seventy-nine or I-seventy-nine for the American Rescue Plan Act?
It's one-seventy-nine.
Okay.
It is one, uh, one-seventy-nine, and this is just a very simple ordinance to create that fund. I figured we could always go back and update it later, but I thought it might be useful to just go ahead and get this established.
And, and for the public who may not be seeing this, even though we're not voting to pass it tonight, this is a required portion of the American Rescue Plan Act that we have to have a separate fund set aside to receive money from the federal government that are involved with this dispersal. Are there questions from council concerning this? Okay, uh, that ordinance be available online for the public if they want to read it, and then we'll have comments at the next public session. The next ordinance tonight is ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eleven, update chapter fifty-one of the Eldsville Town Code regarding rates and charges.
As I explained at the last meeting, um, there was a, a disconnect between what the town's utility office was charging and what the ordinance said that the town should be charging. And, um, the town had revised its rates in twenty-sixteen. The town was required to do what's called a true-up with I U R C. And then in twenty-seventeen, there was also a tracker added. So what was in the ordinance was not, that, that folks could find online for American Publishing was not, um, what the town should be charging. So what I have done is just clean that up. So basically what's in the ordinance now, or what will be in the ordinance once it's published by American Publishing, will match, uh, what the town should be charging. And as I said at the last meeting, nobody got overcharged. Becky, Wines and Utilities told me that she was charging, uh, Utilities customers what Baker Tilly told her to charge. So, um, this is just a little cleanup matter, for lack of a better word. Um, and you may see another ordinance like this, uh, once the city of Bloomington gets their tracker. So, but anyway. That's the purpose of this ordinance.
Questions or comments from the council concerning this? Okay, and again, available to the public online, and we'll vote on our next regularly scheduled meeting. Tonight, the ordinance on second read is, is ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero-nine to amend water rates and charges, increasing the meter deposits, adding six and eight-inch meters, fire protection charges for four and six-inch municipal hydrants, and automatic sprinkler charges for ten and twelve-inch lines.
This ordinance was discussed at the last meeting as well. Town manager Mike Farmer had asked Baker Tilly to do what's called a thirty-day filing at the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission to change the rates and charges for those four things that Scott just read off. And so the purpose of this ordinance is to bring it in line with, um, the ruling from the I U R C. To bring those charges in line with what the I U R C says the town can't be charging.
Questions from council.
Is this raising our rates? Homeowners?
I'll, I'll answer that. Uh, it is not raising the rates to the current customers. Uh, as I said in the last meeting, uh, when Kihei come to town, uh, the, the size of service that goes into their building, we'd never had before. So we had to get Baker Tilly to, uh, put together some rates and charges for different sized services, um, uh, that had never been on our books before. Uh, we had to have the ordinance so we could charge them, and, uh, as we grow, um, there were charges that had never been utilized before for commercial, um, entities. And so, um, this is just putting something on the book so we can actually charge for it, but it has nothing to do with, um, the current customers.
Okay, other council questions?
So, so Mike, have we been charging, um, Kihei a rate then, or I, I'm a little confused about that?
Well, we have been, but, um, this puts it in line with the ordinance that you're getting ready to pass.
Okay, so, so will they see a big change then, or?
No.
Okay, so it's pretty much close to what we were charging?
Yeah, and, and so we started charging them storm rates as well, and so, um.
But they've been aware of this is coming, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, the storm rates and stuff, did they do any of the, uh, things to, that gets them a, a break on storm water, or are we charging them what we would charge everyone else?
Yeah, we charge them what we charge everyone else. It's based on their square footage, you know, and, um, surface that has runoff on it. So it's just a formula, and that, they're getting the same treatment everybody else gets.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Further council questions or comments? Seeing none to the public, council, or questions or comments? Seeing none from the public, back to the council for potential action.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two zero-two-one dash oh-nine to amend water rates and charges, increasing the meter deposits, adding six and eight-inch meters, fire protection charges of four and six-inch municipal hydrants, and automatic sprinkler charges for ten and twelve-inch lines.
I'll second it.
Motion a second, Amber.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Under all business tonight is one appointment to the Eldsville Building Corporation. I'm not sure if we had anyone come forward with interest.
I, I thought we had someone interested in that position.
Uh, we had one, and that person assumed their seat.
Oh, so we had two open seats?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um, has, Mike, have you contacted anyone about this?
I have not. I, you know, I, I thought the board was, um, going to do the appointment, so I haven't tried to solicit anyone that might be interested in the position, but I couldn't.
I'll work on getting someone by next week, or next meeting.
I've got a feeler out for one, maybe two people to see if they're interested at all, so maybe by next week we'll have someone, or maybe by the end of the meeting tonight.
Yeah, and I apologize. I remembered someone mentioning this, and, um, I thought we had taken care of it, or I would have tried to get someone to, so.
All right, so let's, uh, I guess pass on this one for the moment.
Should we probably table it?
I don't know if there's anything really to table since it's an appointment, Darla. How do you feel about that?
Um, I don't think you need to table it. I think it could just be placed on the, the next agenda, the next agenda.
Okay. Um, there is no flood report from tonight, but there is new business. Um, the first is a site plan for the utility garage located beside town hall, and request for proposal for the building design.
So, um, as everyone knows, we're trying to build a new maintenance building. Um, we need a site plan, grading plan, a rule five, uh, stormwater retention and runoff for I D A M. And we'll need some construction documents to, uh, pave the way to, uh, have an architect design the building, which is a whole other part of this project, and, um, and put together plans for it. So, uh, first of all, um, I'm unclear whether, um, the board wants, uh, me to, um, ask our, uh, I, uh, ask our contractor, uh, Bynum Fanyo Associates, uh, to put together the construction documents, site plan, and mural five, and then, um, I'll need permission, permission to, uh, go ahead and set up a request for proposal for architectural, uh, design for the building and the plans that go with it. Uh, that will not, just to be clear, that will not be, uh, anything Bynum Fanyo will be involved with. And so I'll have to work with Darla and probably, um, whoever does the construction documents to put something together so we can get a request for proposal out. And, um, uh, Jeff Fanyo, I talked to him about the architectural design, and he gave me four or five names of architectural companies in the Monroe County that we can use. So I think we'll have, um, we'll get plenty of, uh, uh, response as far as, uh, getting a, um, a bid, uh, to do the work. Once we, um, bid it, and, uh, once we, uh, have the plans, uh, then we'll have to ask for a request for proposal to bu, actually build the building. So I just want to know what the board's pleasure is.
Well, I can say for me, I really, I feel more comfortable if we did an R F P for both, just for transparency purposes, so that way everybody sees that we're letting this open for everybody.
That's fine with me. Um, that's not the way we've done it in the past, but if, um, you think, uh, we should do that, that'd be fine with me. I, I can, uh, put together a request for proposal for all of it. Um, I'll have to talk to Darla because without our resident engineers that we've had for the last forty years, I've really never put together these documents, so, but I can work something out, I'm sure.
That was just my opinion. Uh, I'm sure the other councils have their own.
Darla, where, where are you at with this? Cause we've done it one way long, but I know there's been some legal changes.
Well, with regard to services, municipalities are allowed to engage services of professionals in any way they see fit. So that does include, I think, architects, engineers, lawyers, um, and things of that nature. So, um, the, uh, request for proposal for the building design, um, and for the site plan, I think you could do, you could do either one. You could, uh, solicit bids or request for proposals, or you could appoint someone, um, to provide those services.
What's the council's?
Or you could split it.
Other council comments on this?
Yeah, I agree with William.
Do, do we know how much it's going to cost?
Well, at the last meeting, um, when I talked to Jeff Fanyo about it, he said normally something like that costs around seventeen thousand dollars. Because they have all the topos and everything from, uh, doing the work for the town hall and, and, and acquiring the fifty acres. Uh, he thinks it'll be something less than ten thousand dollars. And that's not for the architectural, obviously, but for the rural five, construction documents, and grading plan for the site.
So less than ten grand? What, Mike, what were you saying about seventeen thousand? You think that's what?
That's what, that's what Jeff normally charges for, uh, a site this large, but because of, you know, their, uh, past experience with the site and the information they already have, uh, some of the work's already been done, and so, um, it's not necessarily, necessary that it'll cost that much. And, um, you know, it's, I'm, they probably surveyed and worked on half of Eldsville in the past, so they just have all the information they need, so that's why it won't cost seventeen. But he said that's what he normally charges for, for a site this size. So, I knew you guys had asked, so that's why I asked him.
Right, so we would probably save quite a few, a bit money if we went with them.
I don't know that. I mean, if, if, you know, if you want to, um, request, you know, um, bids, then, then, then you'll find out.
Exactly. And, uh, would they submit a bid, I guess, is my next question.
Not sure. I'd have to ask Jeff.
Any other comments, questions?
I think, I, I, I see where William's coming from, and I, I kind of am also siding with the transparency. We've done transparency in so many things recently with the vector and that kind of stuff. Let's just open it up for bids, in my opinion.
I guess I gotta, gotta kind of fall the other way just a little bit, and that is only because of our long history, um, with Bynum Fanyo, and, and their intimate familiarity with how Eldsville expects things to be done, uh, and one successful project after the other over thirty-plus years. Again, while I can understand, you know, the transparency of it, I think just the discussion here alone is, is the transparent nature of this, that, um, this is why, at least I would select them because of our history with them. But again, it's, it's whatever the council chooses. Someone want to make a motion one way or the other?
If, if you don't mind, uh, Mr. President, I'd like to ask one more question.
Sure, absolutely, Dan. I'm sorry, didn't mean to skip you.
Um, Mike, how many firms out there, if we did send out an R F P, how many you think would probably respond to this? And I know I put you on the spot, but.
No, it's okay. I mean, all, all these questions are fine because, um, I'm get a bit annoyed about the conflict, and so, heck, if you go another route, it just makes my life easier for, uh, people that are detractors and naysayers, and people that always want to think the worst of everything. So, um, there are, there's, I mean, we work, the town works with, and including me as, um, the, uh, utilities director for several of the utilities in Monroe County. I work with two, um, engineering firms locally, a lot, if not every day. And, uh, then there's probably a third one locally that might do it as well. I don't know if people from out of town would want to bid on that or not, but, um, we've got more than one good engineering firm in Monroe County. Bynum Fanyo just happens to be one of them. And I, and we know, I mean, we have, you know, a relationship with the other, um, engineering firms as well. In fact, we, my company, Bynum Fanyo Utilities, works for them sometimes, so, um, I'm friends with everybody. Well, everybody, but maybe one or two people.
Well, I appreciate Mike, and, and I, I can appreciate what Scott's saying, and I, I appreciate what everyone's saying, to be honest. I mean, transparency is great. Um, I, I think if we do send it out for an R F P, um, if Bynum Fanyo came in there and they were lowballed, I mean, if they were definitely the low man, I think that would obviously show the council something, um, e- exactly what you were saying. So, um, I have no problem either way we go. I just, um, I, you know, if we're going to use them in the, in the future and everything, if there's other firms out there that can do a better job, or not a better job, but can do the job too, I mean, I don't want to cut anyone out either, obviously. So, I guess I'm rambling now, so I'll stop.
Anyone else from the council? Okay, I'll take comments from the public, anyone? See no one there. Back to the council for a motion.
So how would we say that? Will help me, Scott, make a motion to put out bids?
Make a motion institute R F Ps for the site plan for the, for the town hall and request for proposals for the building design. There'll be two ones, correct, Darla?
Yes.
We can just say it one time. We don't have to divide it.
Okay, so, um, I don't think you have to divide it, no.
Okay, make a motion for R S P bids for the site plan for utility garage located inside town hall and request for proposal for the building design.
I'll second.
Yeah, a motion second, Amber.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, Scott Oldham.
Hmm. Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Next under new business is the council meetings, return to in-person meetings or to remain virtual in the discussion concerning those. What's the council's pleasure here?
And please do not let tonight be your fighting pattern. I apologize all over the place for my issues. Uh, I'm on my phone. I, my computer is still at sixty-one percent in a Windows update.
There's, there's no need to bother.
So we can't say like, cause Sandy messed up tonight, we want to go all person?
Well, I mess up every meeting, so that would be a reason not to. So, I mean, we got both, both sides.
Thank you for your understanding.
Well, I'll, I'll go first if no one else is going to speak. Um, my feeling on it, um, Zoom meetings are great. I think, um, we are getting a lot bigger, or public, a lot better results from the public attending these meetings. However, um, I think B C A tapes these meetings and our live meetings. So, um, hopefully people are still watching it, but I do wish we could do both. And the reason why I think we should attend in person is because it's probably time to open things up. A lot of people have been vaccinated, and, um, it, you know, eventually we got to go back to normal life again, if that's ever, ever a thing, but, um, so I really, either way, I feel good. It, it's very convenient with Zoom, um, but on the other hand, too, I like meeting the public face-to-face too. So, um, e- either way is fine with me. It's however you guys want to go.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got something to add, Scott.
Sure.
Um, I guess for me, I'm just not, I don't see the rush to set a date in stone to rush back to in-person meetings. I think it's almost best that we take, continue to take the wait-and-see approach. Um, now, I do believe we're in a better spot than we were six months ago as, as a public. However, I think Zoom has been a tremendous and safe host for not only us, but our members as a public. At this point, I'm, I'm gonna vote to continue on Zoom.
Mike? Farmer?
Yes.
Didn't you, didn't you say the last time that there would be room to social distance for like thirty-some people?
Yeah, I think we can put out thirty-two chairs safely. And also, um, we can even spread out the board, so there's only three people up on top, and a couple can sit on the sidelines, and so, I mean, we can accommodate it when and if, you know, the board decides to go back to a normal meeting.
This is for Mike and Darla. Even if we can accommodate, let's say, thirty-five, thirty-eight people and more show up, are we legally allowed to turn them away?
You said legally, so I'm not answering it.
Understood.
Well, I think if you, if you set a limit, and if you want to use the Monroe County Health Department guidelines, then I think you can. Um, and I think they have set the limit at fifty, actually, so.
Yeah, I saw beginning of March, it was fifty.
Well, I guess I'm the only one who really hasn't talked about this, so, uh, real quick, I, I'm all for returning in-person meetings. However, that said, I'd like first at least wait until June first, and the reason is that, uh, we're at the tail end right now, we hope, of some of the COVID spikes, uh, without singling any group of people out. So before I say this, please understand that. Um, a lot of the people who actually attend our meetings have some years behind them, um, and I really don't want to take a chance with anybody inadvertently becoming exposed. While, yes, we can social distance, um, we still want to make sure that we're offering the public the best service possible. I think we should definitely open the building again to pay your water bill in person, or to come ask a question in person. However, that's not the same as putting thirty people in a room, forty people in a room for an hour, hour and a half, whatever it is. Yes, I think we should go back to in-person meetings, but that said, I don't see any harm in waiting another thirty days to make sure our, our rates are down and stay down, so that we're not inadvertently exposing some people who either normally show up to the meetings, or frankly, um, because of their jobs, have to show up at the meetings. And, and I don't want anyone to be even taking a chance when we can avoid it otherwise. In thirty days, we revisit this, and if that's the council's pleasure at that point in time, we return in-person meetings after June first.
Um, I, I guess I got one more quick question, Scott, and this is for Darla. Darla, I know I've asked this before, but, um, please enlighten me. Is it we either got to do Zoom, or we have to have in-person? We can't do, uh, a combination of both, is that correct?
I think that's true.
We can't like have Zoom, let people listen in if we go in there?
I don't think so. Now, I'm happy to double-check the statute on that and let you know, um, if you can do some sort of hybrid, um, meeting, but.
I know Spencer's doing it.
Okay.
They're doing a hybrid, Pam?
They're doing in-person, and then they told me that they are, have the Zoom, you know, that they do. that they do too, and they also do YouTube. I don't know why, but.
Okay, so they're allowing people in the room for the meetings or just the, uh, council members are in the room?
They did, I didn't ask that particularly. I just asked them if they were mixing because I asked what they were doing in-person and they said yes. And I said, they'll, are you doing Zoom too? So like people that want to come to the meeting, they can listen too.
Okay, so you don't know if there's an audience in the room when the council members are meeting?
Well, I assume there is, but I can find out.
So what's the council's pleasure? Do we want to decide this tonight? Are we going to let Darla do some background work here and come back next meeting to it, or do you want to go? I'm gonna open up for public comment here in just a minute, but again, kind of seeing what the council's temperature is on this.
I'm ready to, to wait until June first and make a decision and at our first June meeting of the month.
Um, actually, Scott, I, I'd like to hear from the public first before I made a decision. Is that?
Yeah, no, I mean, where I was going with that is, do we want to let Darla take two weeks to research so we know our options before we make a decision? Or do we want to make a decision on this this evening?
I'm good either way. Two weeks is fine with me. I mean, that's just one meeting, so. But I would still like to hear from the.
We're, we're, we're gonna hear the public, Dan. Don't get me wrong. I just, I don't want to give the public an open thing here if we're not going to decide for another two weeks, if that makes any sense. I mean, yes, they'll get to speak, but I want to at least give them a direction we're heading if possible. Okay, all right. Anyone from the public have comments about this? Can see Russ. Is there anyone else? Okay, Russ, you'll go first, then Valerie after him.
Thank you. Good evening. It is my understanding that in the state legislature, a bill was introduced early in the session, one in the House and one in the Senate, permitting, um, the public to ascend, uh, governmental meetings digitally and comment during comment sessions when appropriate. I know that there has been a website established for the, uh, on the website for the county of Monroe County and the city of Bloomington and others where they list everything, all their meetings, all their committee works, everything, and it's open to the public digitally. I understand a legal question, Darla, about once we no longer have the, uh, governmental mandate that we have to, uh, meet digitally. Uh, can we have both a combination of an in-person meeting and a Zoom meeting or a digital meeting? William, I asked you in a private email several weeks ago to check on the status of those bills. Uh, I would like to hear back from William if he checked on the status of those two bills currently in our legislature, or if he would be willing to do that and report back in two weeks.
I'd definitely be willing to. I, I sent emails and I forgot, I dropped the ball on following up, so I apologize on that.
Okay.
I will.
Thank you. I am in hopes that the digital option remains. Uh, I've brought this up before. Under the American With Disabilities Act, government is supposed to make reasonable accommodations, quote-unquote, I don't know if Denise is listening out, she's here. Uh, so that people with disabilities such as me, but people in general can attend and participate in governmental meetings. We have demonstrated that digital attendance to meetings is a reasonable accommodation and readily available. So I would challenge denying digital participation even after you go back to public meetings. Uh, I realize this is another thorny issue. I don't want to make it any worse than it is, but I think we would all be better given the results we've seen having digital participation. We had, we had a BZA meeting lead, early in this, in, in early March, and we had eighty-seven people at that meeting digitally, including live video of the property involved. Folks, you can't do that sitting in your meeting room. Thank you, Dan. Uh, Scott, back to you.
Well, one quick thing, Russell. I did see, um, we get a, a news blog every Friday from Association Cities and Towns. And the one thing that did pass was that council can attend via Zoom, only one of us, uh, and we can only do it a certain amount of times per year, but I did not see where anything else passed beyond that. So we, we will check and find out.
Thank you.
Valerie?
Well, as one of those, uh, senior citizens who do come, uh, I, you know, it's kind of like, I've been to the vet, I've had my shots, so I will, I would gladly attend in person. I think that Zoom is, is, has been a wonderful accommodation and I, I really appreciate, uh, Russell's perspective for those of us who don't yet have a problem with coming in, Russ, and I, I appreciate that. At the same time, I've been on a lot of Zoom meetings and I thank the council for not being one of them where we have, uh, where there have been lazy Zoomers. Um, Zoomers with what I would consider bad Zoom manners and, and we've had a lot of those, you know, in different, I'm sure you've all been on Zoom, Zooms with those people and those concerns. So I do think it has allowed us to become more lax in many ways in our manners. Not our civility particularly, uh, but definitely in our manners and, and I'm a little concerned about that. That's why I'm anxious to get back to some more face-to-face. But I would certainly attend and I think that a hybrid, if it's legal, would be a great answer from that standpoint.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Uh, back to the councils. The question remains, do we want to decide tonight? Do we want to let Darla have a couple of weeks to research this and determine at that point whether a hybrid is even possible? Or how do we want to proceed?
We could probably put it, I guess, on the agenda next time, Scott, you think?
Again, if that's your pleasure. If not, we can, we can do otherwise. I'm just.
I mean, personally, I would like to go back to in-person. I mean, that's, that's my feelings on it, but I don't know what everybody. William, what do you think?
Well, I do want to go back to in-person, but I want to make sure we're not disenfranchising people that, you know, like Russell brought up. And I think that, that is key because you really, I, I don't think we should be taking away something from anybody either. And right now, by us being virtually, I don't think we're taking anything away from anyone. But if we only do in-person and can't do Zoom, we are taking stuff away from people that couldn't otherwise attend, and I think that's a bridge too far for us. We have to get that straightened up and I, I just, while I was listening to you guys, I sent messages out to our state reps to see if I heard back during the meeting. Uh, but, uh, I'll, I'll get an answer to that soon, or Darla will, but I, I can only support there if all our residents and all, uh, residents of Ellisville have access to us equally.
Any other comments from council? If not, is there a motion from council concerning where we proceed from here?
I make a motion that we hold this, the vote on like for the council meetings till the next meeting.
So motion to table? Just want to clear.
Um, yeah, motion to table till the next meeting to give Darla time to check in for legal.
Okay, sorry, my internet was breaking up. I didn't know exactly what you said.
No, I, I didn't.
I will second that.
Okay, so Sandy, there's a motion to table on the floor with a second, whenever you're ready.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we'll turn to privilege of the floor. Anyone having business for the council that was not a part of our normal agenda this evening? Sandy, do you see anyone? Cause I do not.
Amber's, I, we'll have to.
I'm sorry, Amber, do you?
I do not see anyone.
Okay, moving then to supervisor comments, starting with the town manager.
Have nothing tonight.
Any other supervisors?
Not tonight, thank you.
Kip, Denise, Kevin, Chief Cornman?
I have nothing.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Down to council comments. Okay, no council comments this time. I'll obtain a motion adjourned.
I second it. Who made the motion?
Me, Big.
Scott?
I think Dan did, but I'm not sure.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned at seven eighteen. And again, I apologize for my technical difficulties.
Oh, no problem, Sandy.
I will forgive you this time.
Thank you.